All right. We're gonna go ahead and call the October 26th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. Let me get to the right place here, sorry. So we will start with the flag salute and I am going to call Sergeant Baldwin up to lead us in the flag salute. Sergeant Baldwin is currently over our pop department, however, he's transitioning and Sergeant Morris will be taking that over, so.
Please stand, join me for the Sledge of Legions. Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant Baldwin. Roll call if you will. Amy?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Present.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Sunday, October 29th at noon and again on Monday, October 30th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. Next item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0. Presentations, would you please announce the first one, Amy?
Our first presentation tonight, number four, is presentation by Northern California Chapter of Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, presenting the Telecommunicator of the Year Award.
Great, and it's one of our very own, so gentlemen, if you would come up to make the presentation, Amy, you're gonna get to stand there the whole time and let people look at you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Carl Grover, I work for the city of Roseville, I also serve on the Board of Directors for the Northern California Chapter of the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, also known as APCO. I thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight for this special occasion. APCO is an international organization defined by and driven to serve the needs of public safety communications professionals. From endorsing interoperability between agencies to promoting professional standards and training, APCO provides value to its members, agencies, and the public at large. The Northern California Chapter holds an annual banquet award to honor public safety communications professionals in recognition of outstanding service provided to their agencies and their communities. One of the award categories is Telecommunicator of the Year. We are here tonight to recognize Citrus Heights Police Department's dispatcher, Amy Rumfelt, as the chapter's 2017 Telecommunicator of the Year. I would like to introduce Chris Kenman, the chapter's immediate past president, to provide more insight into Amy's award.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for inviting us here. This is Amy Rumfelt's 20th year career anniversary in law enforcement where she had started her dispatching profession with the Lake County Sheriff's Department in April of 1997. Amy was one of the first group of dispatchers hired during Citrus Heights Police Department's inception in April of 2006. She has held positions such as Senior Dispatcher and Communications Training Officer during her career and previously dispatched for Lake County since 1997. Dispatcher Rumfelt is a frontline dispatcher and a call taker for the Citrus Heights Police Department. She operates telecommunications equipment to receive emergency and non-emergency phone calls, determines situations from callers, and ascertains all required information for dispatch of a call, relays information to dispatchers via CAD, and operates radio equipment to dispatch first responder units, receives radio traffic from first responders, and monitors emergency and support radio frequencies. Citrus Heights officers believe in her abilities to do her dispatch partners. She has worked many DUI checkpoints, worked more than her share of overtime, believes in community policing philosophy, and has offered ideas to help make our citizens safer. She daily assists in completing DA requests, manages the department's ride-along program, and teaches at the department's Citizens Academy. These efforts help create a bridge between law enforcement and our community to better offer insight to our professions. Her most recent accomplishment was receiving a Team Member of the Month Department Award in August of 2017. Dispatcher Amy Rumfelt handled a 911 call and a critical incident during which an elderly victim was brutally assaulted. She handled the call with sensitivity, compassion, and professionalism, ensuring that the survivor was shown with the utmost respect and dignity. The following day, Amy provided the survivor with a homemade blanket and wrote her a personal note of encouragement and support. Amy was healing from her own personal tragedy and used it as an inspiration for her acts of kindness. For selfishly putting her own grief aside and exercising exceptional compassion and care for a Citrus Heights resident, the Citrus Heights Police Department Management Team proudly recognized dispatcher Amy Rumfelt. In addition to being an experienced dispatcher with professional high standards, great officer safety, and customer service, Amy is well-known for her peers by the department to be a generous person who donates numerous hours and artistic skills to various charities throughout the year. Countless times, Amy has donated hundreds of jars of homemade jam, crocheted blankets and scars, and stuffed inelument with an array of fundraising efforts such as Walk Like Mad, Relay for Life, Domestic Violence Center, Citrus Heights Police Department's Holiday Referral Program, Annual Region or Dispatch Awards Banquet, and the Citrus Heights Police Activities League, only to name a few. Every year, she has taken either the lead or heavily assisted with ensuring the dispatch-operated Christmas family has a wonderful Christmas with a significant amount donated on her behalf. She has also done annual gently-used clothing drives for the less fortunate in her community. She takes the lead with organizing the dispatch snack counter and buys the snacks on her days off to replenish the goods for purchase. These funds for these sales are funneled to various dispatch fundraising efforts. Amy is humble in all that she does and would likely even wince knowing she was nominated. She reminds us all to remember to give, and she is often a wonderful reminder of why we do what we do every day and going above and beyond the college duty. Amy, it is with great honor that I present you with this Northern California APCO International Telecommunicator of the Year along with a $500 certificate for continuing education through the APCO Institute.
Good job.
Thank you, Amy. Amy, you don't get to sit down yet.
So we've got two more. Former City Councilwoman Sue Frost, current county supervisor, Sue Frost is here to give you a pep talk and a certificate, and then I'm gonna come down at the same time and do one, so.
Amy, I want you to know that what goes on in Citrus Heights does not stay in Citrus Heights. And I wanted to, I heard a rumor that you were receiving this award. I wasn't surprised because we continually see excellence emerge out of the Citrus Heights Police Department and so many awards have been given, but I wanted to be here to let you know how proud I am to be a resident of Citrus Heights, how I appreciate your commitment to excellence and your big heart. I have a little bit of an idea about what dispatchers do because my mom was a dispatcher when I was a little girl, and I know that you're oftentimes that lifeline when someone wasn't sure someone was gonna come, or, and I know there's a lot of stress involved in your work. And I just wanted to be here this evening on behalf of the entire Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to present you with a certificate of recognition and congratulations for receiving this award and to wish you all the best and to thank you for all that you do for the community. Thank you very much.
And you can stand here, Sue, we'll get one more picture and then we'll be done. So Amy, we have one too. I'm not going to read it because I think the gentleman there did a much better job of describing your entire position, but you know, when you think about it, so I go out on ride-alongs quite a bit and you see police officers interact with members of the society, maybe not some of our best citizens out there, but when you think about the dispatchers and what they do, you know, most of the people that call them are a lot of times in a panic. There's something going on that they're not used to, somebody, you know, needs medical attention, they're trying to get somebody there quick, and Sue said it best, you're kind of the lifeline in a lot of times for these people. And I know we don't do sit-alongs in the room too often, but I'll tell you, if you ever sit there, I've sat there and listened to them and watched them, they're so professional, and you know, you listen to the voices that are calling in and you're kind of panicked and they're just sitting there like it's, you know, calming them down, it's what they do and they do it very well. Not to take that away from you, but the guys and gals that are in there are great. I couldn't do it, I'd probably have a couple of panic attacks, but you're great, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
(Applause).
Don't run off, don't run off, Amy. Amy, don't run off. Just one quick second.
Okay.
I had the opportunity with the crime scene folks the other night to say something, I'm gonna sneak in here for a second myself. After 30 years in law enforcement, I will say to the folks here, if you don't realize how really important this job is to the officers who work the street, is, they are not only the lifeline to us as we're working, but in critical situations, when the family is listening to the news, say one thing, listening to somebody else, say something else, sometimes they're that lifeline back to the officer's family, to other officers and members of the department, that lets them know what's really going on, how safe or unsafe the situation is, and that their family members, the officers, are safe and are okay. And that becomes very important when you're working in the field of law enforcement and the things that are being said on the news, being said on the radio are not really the same as what's actually having, or as what's happening in the field. And when the dispatchers are there, they're the ones that are truly all that lifeline to a group of people you would never imagine, and for that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more round of applause. And thank you to her parents for allowing us to share with us, so thank you. All right, next presentation, please.
Next presentation is presentation by the League of California Cities on the 2017 Helen Putnam Award for Excellence.
Okay, I'm gonna meet you down there, Charles.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, for allowing me to present this evening. I am here to present the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence to the city of Citrus Heights. Some of you may wonder who Helen Putnam was. Helen Putnam, she was a mother, a schoolteacher, a principal, a mayor, and a county supervisor. But most of all, Helen Putnam was a person who viewed meeting one's potential as the measure of success. Excellence to Helen Putnam was shown by someone who did his or her very best. She was as supportive and loving of people who did their best as she was of people who did the best. To the League and to California Cities, Helen Putnam defined excellence. The award for excellence is given in her memory. This evening, I am honored to present this Helen Putnam Award for Excellence to the city of Citrus Heights for its Navigator Program, which establishes case managers for the local homeless population, which is a model that has been used in other communities to facilitate enrollment in HUD's Coordinated Entry Waitlist and Ranking System for Available Housing. Congratulations.
So, just a couple words. I think it's probably no news to anybody here in the room, not just in Citrus Heights, but across California, across the country, homelessness is up. You know, we made a conscious decision to double our funding for various programs, one of them being the Navigator, and essentially, the Navigator offers services for those who want to be helped. And make no mistake, not everybody out there wants to be helped. So, you know, this young lady here goes out, interacts with them, if they would like to take advantage of the services, she assists them in either temporary or permanent housing. We've seen, you know, the numbers are at 52%, and typically, it's like, oh, okay, that's a good, okay number, but I have to tell you, 52% when you're talking about assisting homeless folks in getting into some type of services, that's a pretty good number. We were before that in the high 30s, low 40s, so that's a big jump for us. And this young lady here, it's mostly her plus our police department. But the other number I want to give you, and again, by no means are we, you know, done with homelessness, there's a lot of work to be done as you drive around, but I do have to say, the numbers from the CHPD, a year ago, 35% of their calls involved homeless acts or incidents. This year, it's down to 22%. Does that mean that we're making a difference? Yes. Does it mean we can do better going forward? We're always striving to do that. But this award here recognizes the work that basically the CHPD and our Navigator have been doing. Granted, Catherine has a little bit to do with that too, but it was very nice to be recognized. They had a booth set up at the California League of Cities where they got to present the program downtown to all the other cities in California, and I just want to thank you for the difference you're making in our city. Thank you very much. (Applause). Two more?
Two more.
Did I miss one? Yeah, oh yeah. Sorry.
So the next presentation is on the Ninth Annual Holiday Referral Program.
Welcome.
Am I on? There we go.
Yes, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sandy Moravio. I'm the Support Services Manager for the Citrus Heights Police Department, and I'm very proud of Amy Rumfelt, who works with me, and so proud to see the great work that she's done and the recognition. Next to me is Michelle Rose. She is my program assistant, and she will be working with the, correction, the Holiday Referral Program this year, which we're here to talk about. So this is our ninth year, I know that's unbelievable, but the Holiday Referral Program is, as a reminder for people that are, to explain to people that are brand new, this program is on our ninth year of working with the city of Citrus Heights, the police department, the service clubs, many community members, individuals, as well as businesses, where we adopt and assist families who have had a hardship in the last 12 months. During the holiday season, we adopt them or we adopt them out, and we collect toys, gifts, items that they need for their homes. People that have had hardship cases oftentimes need more than just the Christmas presents, so we are able to accommodate that as well. In 2016, we were able to help 53 families and 75 adults and 234 children, and so this year, we're kicking off tomorrow, the program. We will be announcing this, sending it out through the media, through email to all of our partners in the program. As far as the selection of the families that we help, this is called the Referral Program because people in the community, a lot of the schools, people that have firsthand knowledge of people in our community that need assistance are actually kind of nominated into the program. They're referred to the program and then the police department contacts them, meets with them, tries to determine what their need is, and we select the families, obviously, that need the most assistance this holiday year. On the slide, it talks about the things that we're looking for, and obviously, we take donations, we start collecting them at the police department on November 20th, so if you want to help, you can certainly donate new items. We will take all of the things that you see on this side, from clothing to blankets to school supplies to toys and gift cards, pretty much anything that, you know, people might like to have wrapped up for the holiday season. As well, we do the food boxes, and we partner up with the service clubs, Rotary is a great partner, and certainly some of the other service clubs as well, they help with doing all the food boxes, about 50 of them usually for the families. We also have our Seroptimists and our Women's Club that help out, and we do stockings for all the children, so those are some of our local partners and items that we do. This year, we're also doing, as we have years in the past, a new or gently-used clothing drive, and Michelle's gonna be leading that up with some assistance from some of the other city staff. And this is for people, basically, when they pick up their gifts on the pickup day, they can also kind of do a little gently-used clothing shopping, so we usually have a pretty good success with that as well. So our program timelines, we're here tonight, obviously, and tomorrow, we'll be messaging out via media, via email, for all the email groups and the different people that we communicate with throughout the year. Our timeline is pretty tight. We will be accepting applications November 1st, we will be interviewing from November 1st through the first week of, or correction, the end of November, and then we'll start adopting the families out and start doing our shopping for them. The 22nd is, December 22nd, which is a few days before Christmas, we have the families pick up their gifts and food boxes, and as well on that day, we'll do a delivery to about three to five families, where the police department joins in with the city and any community members or businesses that have helped us, and we do a little caravan delivery, which is a lot of fun. So what can you do to help? For those of you that are listening, for those in the audience, we certainly can use your help with items to donate, as we talked about earlier, and then adopting families. We're looking for people that are bilingual, if they're interested in helping us interview the families, and of course, helping us with collecting the toys in the community and with other businesses. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
One question, Sandy. So the applications, they can either be, somebody can recommend a family or the family themselves can?
It's a referral program, so they can, we are looking for people to recommend families. However, if, you know, people come across our program, we certainly will take self-referrals if they have a hardship that's near and dear to them, so we'll certainly look at those.
Great.
The applications will be online as well, so we'll be sending those out in emails, and we'll also have it online on our website, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Great job, look forward to the end result, as always, you guys did an excellent job.
Another year, can you believe it? It's Christmas already.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, our final presentation.
Next presentation is a presentation by the Citrus Heights Water District regarding proposed water rate adjustments.
So I've been following you and/or others around, I've seen this presentation many times. You've been, but I will thank you for going out to the neighborhood associations and making this presentation, so, not to steal your thunder, but basically, it's about potential rate hikes, so we've asked them to come here and explain it to all of you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Slowey, and members of the council, and City Manager Boyd, and city staff, and importantly, our customers. I'm Hillary Strauss, a proud city alum and general manager of your neighborhood, Citrus Heights Water District, and I'm also pleased to make a few introductions before I provide a presentation to you and to the community. We have our board president, Carol Sheehan, here, along with our board vice president, Ray Reilly, and we have our engineering manager and district engineer, Missy Pieri, this evening. And they're all available to answer any questions at the end of our presentation. So with that, I'm gonna partner here with Amy on the slide presentation. It is the mission of our Citrus Heights Water District to furnish a dependable supply of safe, quality water delivered to its customers in an efficient, responsive, and affordable manner, and we'll talk a little bit about the affordability in this presentation. For the audience, for those of you who are not very well acquainted with our service territory, what we did is we superimposed the city boundaries on this map in black with our service territory in blue. And as you can see, we overlap the city by roughly two-thirds, three-quarters, and then we stretch a little bit east, picking up portions of the Orange Vale community, a little piece in the southeast there of Fair Oaks, and then the very far southwest of Carmichael. It's about a 12-square-mile service territory with 65,000 residents and about 20,000 customer accounts, and we have a three-member elected Board of Directors that come from geographically different areas within the district, which we call divisions, but they are voted on at large. A little bit about our budget process. It's similar in steps to your budget process in some ways, and in some ways, it's different, but importantly, we're on a calendar budget year. We're not on a July 1 to June 30 fiscal year, and we've been in existence since 1920, so I'm not sure how it began that way, but that is the way we do it. And so we begin our budget process, just like you, with strategic planning, where our elected board and our leadership team gets together, and we look at three-year goals and one-year objectives, and then we prepare a budget based upon those board-directed goals and objectives. And we do make it a priority, and we're so fortunate to have the neighborhood associations throughout our service territory to get out and to meet with our customer base, and to talk a little bit about where we've been, where we are, and where we're going, and to talk about operational and financial issues. And so we've been doing a lot of that during the month of October, and this is really, for us, a capstone of our tour through the neighborhood association's service clubs in the community. And all of this will culminate in a public hearing at November 8th at Rush Park, where the board will consider a proposed 2018 expenditure plan, revenue plan, and rate program. So again, we begin our process, just like you do, with strategic planning, a best practice, and then we again prepare a budget based upon those strategic planning goals. We have several annual capital improvement program goals in our three-year capital improvement program area. We also have an important advanced planning study that we're gonna be working on this year to plan out the future of the district with regard to water mains. We call that Project 2030, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on in this presentation. We also have a series of water efficiency goals, particularly centered around how we're going to plan out and deploy the next generation of meters using smart meter technology to give you the customer real-time data and to provide us with a lot more back office tools to help manage customer accounts. We also have a water supply goal, which is centered around our groundwater program, which we'll touch on in a little bit, and we have some internal organizational goals to help promote efficiency. Normally, we don't talk about state legislation, but this year, we feel that we must, and we have shared this with our customer base, as we've gone through the neighborhood association meetings as well. As we round into 2018, this will be Governor Brown's last full legislative year before he retires, and he has a series of priorities. One of the priorities is he would like to promote the concept of conservation, water conservation, as a way of life. While we certainly, and the water community certainly promotes the idea of water efficiency, we have significant concerns about these bills, AD 1668 and its companion bill in the Senate, SB 606, collectively, the conservation bills. These bills were on a freight train to be approved through the budget trailer process this last year, where it wouldn't even go through the normal policy committee process. And again, while they were well-intentioned, the devil was in the detail. These bills would result in a significant loss of local control to your locally-elected officials. It would take away our ability to establish consumption targets at the water district level and give that power over to unelected bureaucrats in the Water Resources Control Board. It is a very, very bad idea. It will blow a hole into our financial planning, as about a third of our revenue is volumetric, that is to say, based upon how much you use in the way of water. So we do long-term financial planning, just like you do, and we assume certain levels of customer usage in that long-term financial plan. The power that would be given to the state-unelected Water Resources Control Board staff to establish consumption targets of customer usage in that long-term financial plan. The power that would be given to the state-unelected Water Resources Control Board staff to establish consumption targets in out-years in our modeling could blow a hole into our budget. It is a very, very big concern for really all of us, including many cities who have in-house water utilities. So we are really trying to educate folks about these bills, and we need your help. We need the League of California Cities to help us. I really appreciate all the effort that the Sacramento Regional Water Authority, under the leadership of John Woodling, and our legislative program, Adam Robin, have really put a lot of effort into helping to shape these bills, but a lot more work is going to be needed in the coming year. And we also are very grateful to Assemblymember Ken Cooley, who met with us late in the legislative season. We really felt that he heard our concerns, and he played a major role in helping to turn these at least into two-year bills, and we hope that he'll stay the course with us in the coming year. The other bill that's of concern is called SB 623, which is a water tax bill, in effect that would put a tax on all of our water bills, regardless of who the water provider is. All that money would go into a state-directed pot to be used for low-income and indigent water districts and water providers. We certainly, again, support the goals, but we will now be in direct competition with the state for state-directed priorities for ratepayer dollars. So these are two very bad bills, and we need your help. We need the League's help as well. So a little bit more about our budget. So just like the city has a long-term cash flow model to help you plan out your annual budgeting, we, too, have a cash flow model. It's a 10-year cash flow model. We call it a rate model, and there are significant building blocks that we utilize to help put that financial plan and our annual budgeting together. Those green boxes up at the top left represent our revenues. You can see, we have a heavy, heavy reliance on ratepayer dollars. That's very typical for a water utility of our type. And then, to a much lesser extent, we have a collection of fees and penalties and grants. On the expense side, it's very noteworthy to share that about 90% of the water that we provide to you, the customer, is treated and purchased water, surface water, from our neighboring wholesale water agency, San Juan Water District. So that represents about a little more than 16% of our overall expense. And then, I would like to point out to our customers that for every dollar that you spend with your water district, less than a quarter goes to overhead. So we work very, very hard to keep those overhead costs low. We only have 32 employees total to help provide the services that we provide to our 20,000 customer accounts, and we have really kept our costs down over time. And our single-largest expense, we're proud to say, is our capital improvement program. That's our reinvestment into the infrastructure that we build and operate and maintain to provide safe, reliable drinking water to our customers. I'd also like to point out that as part of the proposed 2018 expenditure plan, we're very proud that nearly 10% of our expenditures are planning to go into designated reserves, so that we can build up those cash reserves, and for those rainy days and for those long-term expensive projects that we know are coming, to minimize the use of debt. So a little bit more about that 16% of our budget, the San Juan Wholesale Water District. Regrettably, they don't have the kind of designated reserves that we are working towards, and they have some very large capital improvement projects on the near horizon, including, most notably, the recovering of a large staging reservoir that they have adjacent to Folsom Lake on their Corporation Yard property called Hinkle Reservoir. It's about a $24 million expenditure that they're looking at in roughly 2019. And so they're going to have to debt-finance these projects, which, as you all know, will double the cost of these projects. It will take some control away from their governing board in terms of rates, because they'll have to meet those bond covenant requirements in terms of ratio of revenue over debt, and there'll be large bond issuance costs as well. So those costs will be rolling down the hill to us, and regrettably, we cannot absorb, what we're looking at is roughly about a 50% rate hike between 2017 and 2021. That would erode our financial base, but we are doing what we can to mitigate those costs for the customer. But we do need to highlight that that is a major cost driver for us. So briefly, about our capital improvement program. So while we plan ahead for the future, and we're going to highlight two very important advanced planning studies, we continue to move forward and implement our existing program that stems from the master plan that was prepared in 1999, and then we update it each year, and we're looking this year at about nearly $4 million of capital improvements in our service territory, next year, 2.24 million. And importantly, we keep dollars in our budget each year that are allocated for partnership projects with the city, because we work very closely with you to ensure that when you need us to move some facilities that are in your right-of-way, or we can plan together to implement projects, we do that, and we are then flexible and agile, and we can move around our priorities to fit with you. And that helps everybody, save time, save money. We don't want to see situations where you're paving over projects and then we have to come up and rip up that pavement. So that is what this is all about, is coordinating together and working very closely in partnership. And then this map just represents the 2017 projects in green and the 2018 capital improvement projects in red. So we have pretty wide coverage throughout our service territory. A little bit more about our water supply. As I mentioned, about 90% of it does come from the treated surface water, but we continue to have a very, very significant commitment to an advancement of groundwater, and we're very, very lucky here. We have a lot of bad water around us, McClellan areas around the rail yard, the Aerojet plume to the south, but we're in a sweet spot right here. And so we have very good water quality and very good groundwater right here in this area. And so we have six high-capacity groundwater wells. We're currently moving forward to acquire a seventh piece of property for a seventh well, and we're already on the hunt for an eighth. So we believe hydrologically, we can go to 10. And while that wouldn't make us fully independent of surface water, it certainly gives us choices. And as those price points per unit continue to go up for surface water, there may come a day when it makes more sense for us to use more groundwater and blend that in. So we're putting ourselves in a good spot. So we're also planning for tomorrow's water district, and you have to do that early. And we see a tidal wave of water mains that are going to be coming our way to have to be replaced, beginning in 2030. Most of this area urbanized in the period between 1960 and 1985. So as those water mains come to age 70 in 2030, that's sort of a number that we use for the replacement of water mains, we're going to see a tidal wave begin of water main replacements, beginning in 2030 and then carrying forward. That being the case, we're having these very meaningful and important discussions in 2017, 2018, about how we phase out, cost out, and fund the replacement of those water mains. Do we pay cash? Do we pay-as-we-go? Do we debt-finance? Or do we do a blended approach of pay-as-you-go and debt-finance? And these are such large decisions in terms of their policy implications, their project implications, their financial implications. We thought it was really important to take a page right out of the city's book. When you looked at that very important decision about how to form a law enforcement department, or whether or not you should, we, too, are going to have a customer advisory committee, a CAC, a focus group of customers to help us plan the future. And so we're looking at a 17-member customer advisory committee. Missy has some applications tonight that's available on our website, and we have an application period that's open through November the 13th. We really would like our customers to be involved in helping to plan the future, to work with an engineering team and a financial planning team that we brought onboard, to work on our Project 2030, and to look at all the different options, and ultimately, to help make a policy recommendation to the board. We're also doing the same with our district-wide meters, because as we look at our second generation of meters, we're on our first, we'll be looking at new technology platforms, and this will also be a very large cost item, and we need to figure out how we, again, phase out, cost out, and fund the replacement of water meters. One of the things that we are doing to try to get down the cost of the water meter replacement is we're reaching out to our neighboring water districts to see if we can partner with them and form a consortium, and see if we can become a much larger customer, because if you're a larger customer, you can get that unit cost down. And I ask myself, and we all ask ourselves, why are we all using different meters? We don't have to. So very, this has been great. San Juan Water District, Sacramento Suburban Water District, and Orangevale Water Company have come to the table with us, and so we're working in a consortium. But we'll also have the customer advisory committee take a look at these options as well with us. So as we look ahead to 2018, again, we do the same kind of financial planning that you, the city, do, and we are looking at a very nominal rate adjustment for the coming year. We recognize that rate adjustments of any kind are never easy, but it's the old adage, we can adjust them a little bit now, or we can wait and kick the can down the road and have to adjust them a lot more later, and that's a problem in being reactive, and we would like to remain proactive. What this means in terms of the rate adjustment this year is about $1.68 for the typical customer, family of four with a 1-inch meter. So where does that put us in the region? The regional average for Sacramento of about 18 surveyed agencies, water providers, is the blue line, where the orange line and the blue dot represents where this adjustment would take us, so it'd be still slightly below the regional average. We will have a public hearing where the board will consider these adjustments, whether you support, or if you do not support this rate adjustment, you are certainly welcome to join us on Wednesday, November 8, at the Rush Park Community Center in the Sunrise Patio Room. We have much more information available at our website, and we do have a Facebook wall with information. Lastly, and most importantly, I would like to reemphasize this customer advisory committee that will help us to plan the future of the water district. This is an opportunity for you to help us, and if you're interested in local leadership, to really dip your toe in the water, if you will, with us, and to learn more about how our water district works and to help plan our future. So again, we have hard copies of applications here. We have copies of the application that can be filled out online, and we look forward to receiving lots of applications, so we can get to the opportunity to work with our customer base. And with that, Board President Sheehan, Vice President Reely, myself, and District Engineer Pieri are here, if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hillary. Any questions?
I don't.
One, I'm sorry.
Is it $1.68 per month or per bill?
Per month. And the bills are?
Every other month.
Every other month.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question. I recall a conversation I had with someone not too long ago that suggested that the amount of, the rate you pay to San Juan Water District is determined by prior year usage? Is there any, am I remembering this incorrectly, or is it flat, or how does that work?
It's based partly on fixed charges and partly on volumetric, as to how current the usage is. I would need to research that, but it is fairly current usage or recent usage, and it is a combination, as we said, of about 65% fixed, 35% volumetric.
Okay, and so does that fluctuate every month or every year, or?
Well, it would fluctuate based on a variety of factors, including our volumetric usage, but also the rates themselves continue to adjust upward on both sides of the rate to account for their financial planning and their upcoming capital improvement and debt servicing costs.
Okay, so let me ask it differently, because I'm not getting my question answered, and that is, you adjust your rates to us pretty much on an annual basis, or thereabouts, okay? Maybe not every year, hopefully, but you don't do it more than once a year?
Correct.
That I recall.
That's right.
So then, is that also the case with San Juan Water District? To you, as their retailer, do they adjust their, what they charge you on an annual basis?
Yes, typically, that's what we see.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one last quick question.
Please.
Is there any process, or are we looking at anything in terms of using reclaimed, non-potable water resources for landscaping and other uses to kind of take the load off the domestic use?
Yeah, this region has been a little slower at that, because our unit costs have been so low that the return on the investment has not been there, such as in Southern California. So you see a lot of that in Southern California. I believe the El Dorado Irrigation District has been utilizing that source of water. San Juan and we have not, but again, what we're looking at to diversify our water supply is the groundwater. That's really the key asset that we're investing in. And each of those wells runs about $3 million in investment, when you consider land acquisition, design, and construction. We will continue to look at other water sources as well, such as reclaimed water, as the opportunity and as partnerships come together through RWA and others, where we could use grant dollars to look at those types of sources, but they're not in the immediate future.
Okay, I raise the question only because if you're going to be planning out for 2030 and starting all the repiping and the other processes, would it not be at least something to look at in terms of the potential of using that and, again, cutting back the demand on our potable water resources?
Well, as we look at, as we get into the weeds with our Project 2030 advanced planning study, that certainly could be a consideration. We'll be looking at all the practical options, but we also have to weigh those against, what is the return on the investment?
Sure.
And what's the practical, you know, financial and operational solution? But we certainly won't preclude those options.
Thank you.
Follow-up question, and that is in regard to surface water versus groundwater. Citrus Heights Water District has had a pretty good reputation as far as good, clean water that's drinkable, and it's surface water. And groundwater, as provided by other water companies, water service purveyors, has a distinctly different taste because of, in part, because of the mineral content and so forth. So as you go forward with your planning for using groundwater, are you considering using it as a primary source of water or as a backup source of water, if surface water does, you know, has a drought year, as an example?
Sure. Well, the short answer is, we, as we continue to look at different issues pertaining to price point and water supply availability, we will be making those decisions about how much groundwater to blend in with the surface water. Currently, we're at a 90-10 split. During the very low point of the drought, we could have made our water customers whole and not had to reduce usage, but we were told by the state of California, we couldn't use all of our assets.
Right.
And ironically, many of those groundwater wells that we wanted to use were, in part, funded with state funding, state grant funding. So it was ironic that we couldn't make our customers whole, but we would have blended in more groundwater at that time, had we been able to. And we do treat the groundwater, but it is very good water quality. You're right, it does have a different taste, and so that would be a piece that we would, if we had to use more groundwater, that we would have to really give some consideration to. But it is very good water, good quality water.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions on this side?
All right. Thank you very much, Hillary.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thanks, Hillary.
All right, next item, comments by council members, regional board updates. I will just say this, folks, there's a lot of speaker sheets here for various upcoming items, so less is more as we move this one forward. Brett, start with you.
Thank you. Today, I met with Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Board, and just so that you know, November 1st is the kickoff for the "check before you burn" period, and people do confuse that with "spare the air." Those are two different things entirely. You may look out on a day, and it might look like it's just fine, and you think it's okay to fire up the fireplace or whatever. It might not be, and so you might want to check, and there are different ways to check. You can download their free Sacramento Region Air Quality app. You can call 1-877-NO-BURN-5. You could follow them on Twitter, @AQMD. You can visit airquality.org, and you can also sign up for a daily email alert at sparethear.com. So again, just because everything looks clean and whatnot, it still might be a day when you're not supposed to burn, and the reason for that is that they also take into consideration conditions that are coming, and they put that all together. And then again, you may have heard in the morning that it's a day where you're not supposed to burn, and there may be a change. And so if you decide that you want to burn in the afternoon or evening, you might want to check it again. It may have changed. And so just something to think about as you start, as we start getting colder. On Saturday, Citrus Heights is going to participate in the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, and if you have dangerous, expired, unused, or unwanted prescription drugs, including pills or patches, you can take those to the Citrus Heights Police Department between 10:00 AM between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. to dispose of them. And then the final thing, just real quick, it hasn't happened yet, but in November, I just want to let everybody know, so hopefully they can put this on their calendar, that November 16th will be the 31st Annual Tie One On For Safety Kickoff Event by Mothers Against Drug Driving, and it'll be out at Performance Chevrolet on Madison. So 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., attend if you can.
Thank you, Brett. Mr. Fox?
Well, Brett had a couple of mine, so I won't repeat those. Neither one of my committees had meetings since our last meeting. We've had a couple of wonderful public things, spectacular, and Halloween Parade and Fire Fest Festival that I was able to attend, which worked out very well. Other than that, I will do as you ask, and we'll keep it short.
Thank you, sir. Jeanne?
Okay, a few things. sanitation board did not meet, in fact, we're not meeting again until December, so things are trucking along there, mainly working on the Echo Water Project. The panel board met this past week, and we have two events coming up for you parents who have kids are going to be off of school during Christmas vacation. The first one is a, on the 28th of December, there will be a railroad museum field trip, and then the next one is a new event this year, it will be the Day of New Year's Eve, where we will be throwing a party for the kids during the middle of the day. This week, I spoke on Tuesday to the group, the local group for the Sacramento Area Realtors, SAR, and it's always a fun group to talk to. They invite me in every October to talk about what's going on in Citrus Heights, and so I want to thank staff for putting some material together for me, and it always gives me an opportunity to brag about our community, to Realtors who are looking for good quality neighborhoods to bring their clients to. As a result of that, one of the flyers that I did leave with them has to do with our First Time Home Buyer Program. For the first time in a long time, we don't have a waiting list, so if you know, if you or you know someone who has not been a homeowner for at least three years, meets the income requirements, and I think we can find that on our website, this is a great opportunity to get into a home with a silent, what's called a silent second, a 30-year silent second, at 3%, which means you don't make any payments on that second until you either satisfy the 30 years or sell the house. And so just wanted to promote that one program that we have for first-time home buyers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Vice Mayor Mill?
Real quick, last meeting for RT was this Monday, and I thought it was a pretty simple meeting, the agenda looked pretty innocuous, and walked in and hadn't realized that one of the consent items, which got, obviously got pulled, was selling some of our surplus property from Regional Transit to fund some capital projects, and one of the surplus properties actually is, the city of Sacramento is interested in buying for homeless shelter, and it was very controversial. That item's been continued to the 13th of November, and other than that, not much of note out of the meeting.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, SECOD Board met, Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Good news, Citrus Heights was awarded two grants to roughly $800,000, which we will take advantage of. Library Board met, nothing exciting there. Went to all the events that the rest of you guys did on the 4th, which is Saturday, a week from Saturday, actually. The HART Homeless Assistance Resource Team is having a spaghetti feed at the Holy Family Church, so if you want to help out, and basically what they did last year was, all the funding that they got, they worked with various religious organizations, not all in town, but they would meet and provide in the cold, the colder part of the winter, shelter for homeless folks, keep them off the street, so. With that, that's it for that, so next item, Amy.
Next item is public comments, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Amy. So we do have a lot of folks here to talk, in particular, two items, 12 and 13, so I am going to reduce all public speaking to, instead of five minutes, three minutes. So we'll start with items, the five folks that want to speak during the public comment, and then the other ones who specifically called out a number, I will call you up then. So we will start with Jennifer Spur, followed by David Warren.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Spur, and I'm here to address a growing problem that's increasingly, exponentially serious. The problem is transient issue. There are several homeless camps in various areas around our city. I've been told by CHPD that there's no camping ordinance. There are also issues of transients hanging out at local businesses, they're just hearing people like me from shopping in these areas. People spinning in circles, holding weapons, cursing and speaking. I choose to take my tax dollars to Roseville, to Rockland, to other places where I feel safe shopping. There's a specific issue in the population transient camps on Caltrans property directly behind my house. This is a problem because anyone on the hill can see into my house. I can't go in my backyard, my daughter can't go in my backyard. My property, my house, people are standing there peeing in areas, and my daughter can see their private parts. That's a big problem to me. On Tuesday night, somebody that was on a homeless camp in that area came to our front door screaming and hollering, saying that we took their phone. They were pounding on our door, our dogs were barking, I made my husband come to the door, they tried to force their way in, I ended up having to call 911. The cops came out, they got the guy, I don't know if he got arrested, but 4 o'clock the next morning, he comes back. The area behind our house is Caltrans property, so it's not Citrus Heights Police jurisdiction. 6 o'clock in the morning, nobody had showed up. At 10 o'clock in the morning, the guy's standing on the hill taunting my husband, "Call the cops, call the cops, see if I care." I sent my daughter to stay somewhere else. We didn't stay at our own house here in Citrus Heights last night, because I don't feel safe. Plenty of awards got handed out here tonight for people, and the award that I want is to be able to feel safe in my home, to be able to feel like I can shop in the city that I live in. And I want to know what the council members are going to do to work with the police departments, to work with the state of California, to blur those lines of jurisdiction. Because when I call the police department and say, "Hey, I need help," and they turn around and say, "Not my problem, it's not my jurisdiction, I can't help you." What am I supposed to do? So I want your help to make sure that I feel safe in the city that I live in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. A couple of things, I know you're currently working with the CHPD on the issue, and they have been out there a couple of times. I can guarantee you, they're not going to say it's not their jurisdiction, they're well aware of where that property is, and I think you do realize, they come out when they're called, so let's just be clear on that. Nobody likes to have that situation, it is a little awkward because it's Caltrans and it's a not viewable property, if you will, from any spot. So we will continue to work with them. I actually will, on the 2nd, a meeting with a group in Caltrans will be there, so I will also bring up that particular corner lot.
I can give you the parcel number if you want to.
I know exactly where it is. So, believe me, we take it seriously, but, you know, the homeless issue in general, Citrus Heights isn't going to solve it on its own. It's, you're right, homeless doesn't stop at the jurisdiction, right? It's a state issue, it's county issue, state, and really what it comes down to is mental health funding. There isn't it, and we all have to work on that, but we do take your problems seriously. Again, I know the pop officers are here, and they've already spoken to you and will continue to do so, but please keep us informed as to how this goes on, but I have every confidence that the CHPD is doing everything legally they can do.
They are, they're helping.
Sometimes their hands are tied, and that's frustrating for you, I get that, but let the process work, and I think it will work out in your favor, so, but thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Warren, followed by Dr. Jaina Karpinski-Costa. Mr. Warren, you've filled out two cards, one in particular on item 11, which is a consent item that is typically dealt with under public comment, so I'm going to combine both your cards, I'll give you a little leeway on the three minutes, but we don't pull consent for public comment, it's handled under here.
The first item is under a minute, if I can have three for the other, latter, it'd be great.
Right.
The first item has to do with Councilman Daniel, Councilman Daniels' comment about the drugs to be disposed of this weekend. Unfortunately, this community only has one drug disposal facility in the city, and that's in Walgreens. It's unconscionable that we do not have a second disposal site, although the appearance of the disposal boxes is not necessarily the best thing. I cannot understand why when we have three civic buildings, we do not have one dropbox for unused drugs. It costs the city nothing, the company, the company that provides the dropboxes is funded by the pharmaceutical industry, and I cannot imagine why we don't have one in the City Hall, in the Police Department, which in all honesty is, has insufficient space, or in our, the major, our meeting rooms, for the disposal of drugs, so that when you go to Walgreens and you try to dispose them, that box is full 48 hours after it's picked up, which leaves a lot of drugs laying around. We don't need that in this community, as has been repeatedly demonstrated. As to item 11, I'd like to speak against that particular item. I cannot understand why, in an environment where there's extraordinary demand for seasoned officers, where there is a demand for professionalism, that we are paying officers at such a low rate in our community. These people face an extraordinary danger on a day-to-day basis. If we can afford the social welfare for the Sunrise Mall, then certainly we can afford better funding for our police officers and for the equipment that, that they are provided. We need more police officers in this community to buy their appearance on the streets. It is a more effective deterrent to crime, a more effective deterrent to homeless activities, it is the best way to reduce crime. Incarceration doesn't solve crime, the threat and presence of police officers does. If we can avoid the cost of a new election for a city council person, that money can best be used to pay for more police officers in our community. There is no reason why, when we have a reserve, that we cannot use that to increase our police officer ranks. Last night, I had to call at 3:00 in the morning because of people racing up and down Auburn. I was very fortunate, within five minutes, to hear the sirens going down the streets. But on another instance, when I made that same call, there was no response whatsoever, not because the police didn't want to be there, it's because they were otherwise occupied. We need more police officers on the street, this matter should be rejected because of its insufficiency, and we should be looking to, at ways to increase the budget for the Police Department, to increase their numbers. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Jaina Karpinski-Costa?
Still waiting for that phone call on my dog, Dr. Jaina.
I will, I will, I'm busy.
Just thought I'd mention it, since you were here.
I will. We're tearing our house down, this is like, I'm busy every day.
Okay, but my dog doesn't understand.
I know. But you went to another veterinarian, though, and now you want to come to, yeah.
Yep.
I'm Jaina Karpinski-Costa, president of Area 10, this is Lorraine Furry, our vice president and our REACH representative. We are here tonight to give you the annual report, because if it's October and it's the 10th month, it must be the 10th Neighborhood Association. So the first thing I want to do is thank the city for its support of all the neighborhood associations, and I want to encourage people to attend their neighborhood associations when possible, because it's a great place to do the following. We have had speakers throughout the year. Of course, we celebrated the annual city, the 20-year cityhood. In fact, SOAR was recognized in three of the top 20 lists, our health fair, our watch, our sign toppers, and, let's see, what else do we do? Oh, the health fair, for sure, we get, we've had awards on that, national awards and recognition by the city. We have had our speakers from Animal Control, the Chief of Police came, smud was increasing their ranks and they came, we had code enforcement, we had, Chris Falbeck came and talked about drainage projects, we had the big layout of the Mitchell Farm development, Colleen McDuffie came and went over the whole process of planning projects. I gave the talk on mosquitoes, and so we have lots of information get shared at our meetings. Our charitable events are that we do the Sorcer Seniors at Christmas, we bring food, shelf-stable food to, last year, we did 24 households, we're aiming for 30 this year. We partner with Meals on Wheels, and we, we bring these shelf-stable foods to, because they only get five meals a week from the Meals on Wheels, so they need to eat on the weekends and whatever, and so Christmas, they kind of get overwhelmed with, with a lot of stuff and stress, so. Last year, it was very rewarding, we teamed up with the Lions, and we put two bags together, one with food and one with non-food items, and the Lions provided all the non-food items, we did the food. We got some of our NIP money we used for that, some of our own money that we used for that, and some of, lots of donations from our members, where they brought just gobs of canned goods and boxed items. So we want to, we do our fun things, like we do Bring a Dish Make a Wish, 18 years we've been doing that, and that's where you come and you, the potluck, and you put a wish in the, Lorraine makes this great wishing well, and we put our wishes in the wishing well. We do, we love our turkeys, so we do an annual turkey shoot, where you take a picture of a turkey who lives in SOAR, you don't have to live in SOAR, but the turkey does, and then you win a turkey. And then we do a little turkey trivia quiz, which I, I make tough every year, and you win the accoutrements, you know, the wine and the gravy and all that. So that's what we do. Any questions?
How do you verify the turkey lives in your neighborhood?
We, we trust, well, first of all, they say, "We are a SOAR turkey," yeah. We trust that the, one time, a lady won, and she fessed up that the turkey didn't live in SOAR, so we went to the next winner down.
All right, just curious, because they tend to travel.
Well, we have the Mariposa flock, and then we have the Highland Avenue flock, and they actually cross in front of the Turkey Crossing sign. I just think it's hysterical.
Educated.
That'd be a great picture, Jaina.
We have a picture of them in front of the sign, we do, somebody submitted it, yeah.
Brett, did you have a question or comment?
I just want to take a moment to publicly commend Jaina and the others on the Neighborhood Association. Nobody does it better than Dr. Jaina, and I can't imagine how much better of a city we would have if we could get the kind of participation in our Neighborhood Associations that you do.
Well, it fluctuates, and we have good months, bad months.
It does, it's sometimes incident-driven, and stuff like that, too, but issue-driven, and, but, but, and there are other strong people around you, too, but you are the jewel in...
Well, you know, I, I...
No, 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 just take it, just accept it.
I want to, I want to credit Bill Hughes, because it's his vision that started all this, and if it's one place where people can get information, it's through the Neighborhood Association, because we can gather city people to come and share that information. We review projects, you know, we've had several projects that were sent to us, the Bear Paw Village, the Mitchell Farms, the Arco thing, you know, we get to give our comments, not that they matter a lot of times, but we get to at least know what's going on, and if someone says, "What's going on on that corner down over there?" And we usually can answer that, that question, because we get, anything we get forwarded to us gets forwarded out to our mailing list. So, you know, when you guys send us stuff, all of the neighborhood presidents send it out to their email list, so we become a little network. I don't twit and all that other stuff, I don't do social media.
It's tweet, Jaina.
Tweets, twit, whatever. So I don't know how to, how to communicate that way. I, you know, people say, "Check us out on Facebook," and it's like, that's the last thing I would ever do. I don't have time for that kind of stuff, so I like to just send out my little SOAR email list, and we call it Soaring Forward, we forward it out.
Dr. J, have you decided when and where the Bring a Dish Make a Wish will be?
Yes, this year, we are, because, I'll tell you, it's getting harder to rent that building, so there were no available days, so we decided that the Lions had already reserved it for Wednesday, the 27th, and so if you're sure invited, all you guys can come on Wednesday, the December 27th, at 6:00. You don't even have to bring any food, we have so much food, and we're going to team up with the Lions this year, and so...
Where did you say it was going to be?
At the Little Community Center.
Oh.
On December 27th, 6 o'clock.
Really? Is that big enough?
Yeah, big enough.
Yeah.
I think it's at 50 people. It, it fits what we have, plus food.
I'll, I'll bring a turkey, I know where to find one.
Can't be from Area 10.
Well, then, you know, we do our fireworks booth in the summer, but that's kind of like separate, that's part of our charity, and so the project that we had planned totally failed, the Make a Difference Day failed. The schools were just so impenetrable that we could not reach the students, so we had not one single entry, so we're going to rethink out our scholarship plans for, maybe have a scholarship program.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, again, thanks for all that you do.
And thank you, Councilmember Daniels.
Take care of our mayor's dog, please. Take care of our mayor's dog, please.
And I went somewhere else, because I needed an x-ray, and she doesn't do x-rays. Come on.[605.72][605.72](Laughter). All right. Next item, please, Amy. That was all for, uh, public comment. The others have all identified either twelve or thirteen to speak on. I will call you on that item.
So, the next item is consent calendar, items eight, nine, ten, and eleven, for council consideration.
Anybody wish to pull an item? If not, I will accept a motion on the consent calendar.
We move consent.
So, I have a motion, two motions and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five-zero. Next item, Amy.
Next item is public hearing, item number twelve. The subject is Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity for Food Max at sixty-nine eighty-two Sunrise Boulevard. The recommendation is to approve the Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity that will allow for the issuance of a type twenty-one license for off-sale distilled spirits at Food Max at sixty-nine eighty-two Sunrise Boulevard.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Allison Bermudez with the Planning Division. Uh, this project tonight is a request to approve a letter of public convenience and necessity. Uh, PCNs, as we call them for short, are required when a, uh, area requesting a liquor license, in this case, Food Max, is considered over-concentrated with liquor license, meaning there is licenses issued above and beyond the number allowed by ABC, or an area is considered high crime. When a business applies for that license, ABC, um, refers them back to the local jurisdiction for a review of the application, and it's your decision tonight to honor or to not approve the Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity. Uh, Food Max is the requesting, uh, business tonight. They're located in the Copperwood Shopping Center along Sunrise Boulevard, north of Greenback on the west side of Sunrise. Food Max requests for the liquor license, they're requesting what's called a type twenty-one license. Uh, type twenty-ones, um, allow the sale of distilled spirits along with beer and wine. Currently, Food Max does sell alcohol, they do sell beer and wine, and so this is additional license that would allow the addition of distilled spirits to their current selection. Food Max has indicated, um, to us in their request that they will restrict the sizes of being sold. Beer singles sold would be no less than twenty-four ounces, and wine and spirits will be sold in containers no less than seven hundred and fifty milliliters. Uh, the alcohol sales are a small portion of their overall business, expected to be less than five percent of the store's total sales, and they will display the spirits in a locked display, as shown here. Um, so how they propose to operate, um, is the spirits would be on a shelf in a cage that's secured. Um, a customer approaches the area and would like to purchase spirits, they would ring a bell, a store clerk, clerk would come over to them, unlock it. The clerk would then, uh, retrieve the spirits and take it to the front of the store and where it's held and paid for, and not provide it to the customer until it is paid for. Uh, so the customer does not walk around the store, um, prior to its purchase, they're only given the bottle after it's paid for. As we do in letters of, uh, public convenience and necessity, we review concurrently with the Police Department. We work very closely with them and review the application. Police Department reviews their proposed security plan, uh, the calls for service that the business has had, um, over the past. Um, and so we have done that, worked very closely with Sergeant Baldwin on that review. Uh, the applicant, uh, Food Max did also attend the area Neighborhood Meeting in August, uh, and heard from the neighborhood, um, their concerns and issues, and provided several responses in your pocket tonight to their concerns. Uh, majority of the concerns that were expressed by the neighborhood, uh, completed, they exist, uh, contained the number of existing businesses that are sell alcohol, homelessness that is currently in the area, and the cleanliness of the center. I want to talk about over-concentration, since that was, um, a concern that was mentioned. ABC determines whether an area is considered over-concentration, and as you recall, over-concentration is a number, um, that's derived through ABC's review of population, and this is households in a census tract area. So, geographically, the city has twenty-two census tracts, so within each of those areas, the population is determined, and then they base the number of licenses that, um, should be in an area based solely on population. Looking at the Food Max location and its census tract, it goes from, uh, Oak Avenue down to Greenback, Sunrise on the west, and Fair Oaks on the left. It's a pretty large census tract with a high concentration of commercial areas, um, including the Citrus Town Center at Greenback and Sunrise. So, in that census tract currently, there are six licenses, including the existing license held by Food Max, where they sell the beer and wine. So, in the Copperwood Center, um, with the number one being the Food Max, um, there is a, one additional license at the Tony's Liquor. Um, across the street, um, is the Seven-Eleven, and then down within the same census tract at the corner there is the Sprouts, Bevmo, and the Rite Aid. Um, and we, when we are considering this number of licenses, we are talking about off-sale licenses, and so these would be licenses where a customer would purchase alcohol and take it away. It's not a sit-down, um, like at a restaurant or a bar. These are what are called off-sale licenses, so the product is consumed off, off-premise. Um, looking beyond the census tract, um, we look to the north, there are two licenses at the gas stations there at Old Auburn and Sunrise, and then on the south, the Shell Station there at Greenback and Sunrise. And those are the licenses within that area, um, which do appear like a lot of, um, you know, a large number of licenses, but there is such a high concentration of commercial in that area, it's not unusual. And looking at the review of the application, um, staff is recommending, along with the Police Department, that this council re, uh, approve the application, uh, for several reasons. One, the alcohol is a very small part of the store's operation. Um, as mentioned, it's less than five percent of their total sales. It really is to provide a convenience for our customers, to make a one-stop-shop. The security plan, operational, and their procedures that have been presented to us and are in your pocket, satisfy, satisfied the Police Department concerns. And alcohol licenses requests from large grocery stores such as this in the past have been approved, been approved, um, because of their ability to provide security. Um, the granting of the license we did not fill, um, could be attributed to an increase of crime or homelessness or drunk driving in the area. Happy to answer any questions, as well, as I know the Food Max management is here and would probably be able to answer any operational questions that you might have.
Thank you. At this point, let's limit it to questions of staff, then we'll open the public hearing. If Food Max would like to make, uh, comments, and then we'll go to the, the speakers. Does anybody have any questions of staff? Brett?
So, just going to clarify things. The, the census tract is created to satisfy or serve a certain, uh, population, a, a number of people, correct?
The census tract is just a geographical representation for breaking down that area and determine population. And then, ABC, um, has a number, two, every two thousand households, one license should be issued.
And according to ABC standards that are set, uh, they think three is sufficient?
Based on population, yes.
And we currently have six over there now?
Correct.
And this would be a seventh?
Correct.
So, we would have over two-hundred percent-plus saturation in this area?
Correct.
Um, and then, uh, as far as, um, we tout ourselves as listening to our neighborhoods and stuff like that, it's my understanding that, um, there were actually over eighty letters of protest received or sent into ABC, um, regarding this project, and it's, um, the Neighborhood Association President, at least, I'm not sure about the association, if they took a stance, but the President, um, gave it a thumbs down, definitely.
Is there a question for staff?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Good lord. So, in recommending this, we're, we're trying to find that, um, there is a necessity for it, correct? That, I mean, that's what we're calling, this is, it's called a Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity. So, we're trying to determine if there's a necessity for this, this business, correct? Or this, uh, sale?
That would, uh, the public convenience or necessity, and that would be, um, based upon in the area, and it is your discretion, your review, and your decision whether they have met that need.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Jana?
Before I ask my question, I just want to clarify, uh, based on a question that Brett just asked, um...
Please be careful.
As I recall, if I understood this, Brett, correctly, you stated that this new license would be a seventh license. Is that correct?
It technically would be a seventh license, because AB, uh, Food Max currently holds one license for the beer and wine, and this would be a license for the distilled spirits. They would, in essence, have two.
Okay, so in every other location where distilled spirits are sold, do they have two licenses, a twenty and a twenty-one?
Not every retailer chooses to keep both licenses. Um, some do, some large retailers do, because they could then move it to one of their other stores, it would be in a different area.
Okay.
But for the time being, they technically will have two licenses.
Okay, so a twenty-one does not include beer and wine, then? Only distilled spirits?
Twenty-one does include beer and wine, um, so they don't need the twenty, but they're retaining the twenty, at least for this timeframe.
Got it.
And then they'll decide what to do with it.
Got it. Okay. Um, is, just, I know we've, we've gone through this before, but I just want to ask the question, though. Um, are the, is the vote a thumbs up or a thumbs down, or can it be conditional? Conditions be put on it?
Correct, so this is a total approve or deny application, um, cannot be conditioned. What's been provided to you in the report are, um, information's been provided to us from Food Max, is how they're going to operate, as far as the security in the cabinet and so forth, but it's not a conditional license. So, you either have to approve it or deny it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I have a plethora of cards. Again, remember, I will call you up in the order that I have them. I'll give you three minutes, um, and we'll go from there. So, the first speaker will be a John Tuminali, and I believe it's a C. Gideon. Um, I'm sorry if I can't read that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I am John Tuminali, and, uh, good evening, members of our City Council, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you. Uh, some of you may remember me, uh, along with my wife, as the folks who lobbied the city to install that traffic light at the intersection of Sunrise and Sun Garden, and I thank you once again for making that happen. Okay. Therefore, as a Citrus Heights homeowner for twenty-seven years, any proposal that affects that intersection or the residences or businesses nearby is of concern to me, such as the AMPM proposal, but we're not going to talk about that today, that's a discussion for another day. We're here to talk about the merits of granting the Food Max supermarket a general liquor license. First question I have to ask is why? Where's the necessity? What convenience would this have? Within two miles of Food Max, there are a number of businesses that have general liquor sale licenses, so how does granting another one serve convenience and necessity? In fact, it may be detrimental due to the potential for shoplifting of liquor. Now, we saw the presentation, perhaps it may not happen, perhaps it will, but what about other deviant or criminal behavior due to intoxication or other factors? Food Max is already successful, it's a great business. Even with a limited beer and wine sales license, it enjoys a competitive advantage over other area supermarkets with general liquor licenses due to its pricing structure. Selling liquor will not impact their bottom line, we just saw that, all that much, and I have to question how this would really benefit our city financially. I don't think it will. The second question to consider is the impact that this will have on established privately-owned small businesses, not only the one adjacent to Food Max, but others in the area. It will be devastating to them and to their employees, who will lose their jobs if these businesses have to close. As a strong supporter of local privately-owned businesses, I urge you to really consider the impact that your decision will have if you approve this request by Food Max. This is really a decision between supporting large corporate interests, as opposed to supporting the interests of the residents of this community and the small businesses that we support. I emphatically urge the council to deny this license request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. C. Gideon, and I may have said that wrong. I could give your address, you live in Orangeville. Eight-one-four-one, is that the person not here? Okay. I tried. Bob Hess, followed by Sunny Stately.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
And thank you for that presentation. I wasn't expecting that. Uh, I thought I had to prepare that for myself. Uh, that was nice. Uh, we are Save Mart Food Max subsidiary. We do have, uh, a couple banners, and we also have Lucky's. Uh, we are a major company, uh, we do have two-hundred-and-seven stores, uh, but we are family-owned, so we understand the, uh, questions that are being asked here today. Uh, our Save Mart companies provide many services and conveniences to our communities. Throughout California and northern Nevada, our company cares about the consistently maintaining good relationships with the residents and communities we serve, and Citrus Heights is no exception. We have been responsible seller of beer and wine since the, uh, opening of Food Max in two thousand and seven. Uh, the twenty-one license would allow us to sell liquor, and, uh, we wouldn't need the twenty license, as you asked, uh, earlier, uh, Councilman. Um, we do, uh, like you said, we do have locked displays. This is something we've been implementing, um, for the past few years, has been very, um, successful with us, um, not, not able to steal the product, um, and zero shrink for us as a business, so that's one of the reasons we, uh, like having that as well. The limited liquor variety, the store and the spirits and the bottles, we wouldn't sell anything smaller than a seven hundred and fifty milliliter. This means that we will not be any, uh, selling any single-serve bottles or spirits, which typically contribute to the, uh, public drinking and driving and, uh, consumed in the parking lots. Uh, we are controlling the loitering. We have a new store manager, he's here tonight. Um, the other store manager was transferred to another Sacramento location. They've been doing a great job of maintaining that loitering out there. I drove around the building today, it looks like there's new construction back there. It's very clean, uh, they were actually painting the front of the building when I showed up today, so, um, walked the perimeter there, I was there for the last four hours. Store looks very nice, I love the community. I, I'm very impressed with the City Council and the public's, uh, efforts to be, you know, be, be heard here. You guys are top-notch, so I appreciate that. Uh, we do have trained staffed. Um, our checkers are trained in the sale of, um, aged restriction products, including alcohol. In addition to being trained upon hire, checkers receive mandatory annual training along with their periodic reminders. The training covers checking IDs, as well as not selling alcohol to obviously intoxicated individuals. Uh, we hope that the plan above demonstrates the awareness, the community members and concerns, that we are addressing their concerns by implementing processes that reduce the likelihood of a negative impact, while also meeting the demands of the other community members. We will continue to maintain the premises and operate this location in a responsible manner to ensure we do not disrupt the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Food Max? Thank you, sir. Sunny Stately, followed by Douglas Moffett.
Hi, City Council members. My name is Sunny Stately, and I greatly oppose the liquor license to Food Max, because I've lived in the community for over ten years, and I, and as they're saying that they're, they're patrolling the, uh, parking lot, they're not, because I've driven up there to go into the shopping small stuff, and homeless people are attacking me, wanting money, or trying to grab my purse, and there's no security out there. So, that's wrong for that. And for another reason, Tony Liquors has been there, they sell it, they're in the same parking lot. There's no reason for them to, to have, to push Tony's Liquors out of it, because all the businesses are, are pretty much leaving anyway, because, uh, Food Max pushing out businesses by expanding their, their grocery store. I feel it's a greed move, not a helpful move, and that's why I'm opposing for the, their liquor license to be squashed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Douglas Moffett, followed by Davinder Minhas.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Listening to them talk about how well locked up the liquor cabinets are and how clean the store is, has nothing to do with the issue here, I think. What it boils down to is a large corporation moving into an area where there's already a small business that's making a profit barely, but, you know, making a reasonable profit for the amount of time they put into it, who are going to be adversely affected by what these folks... what these folks want to do. They talk in glowing terms about how they're a family business. This is a giant corporation. When we met with them in August, it came out very clearly. These people are representing, you know, a large company. They go into an area, they stake out a claim, and small businesses in that area go out of business. Tony's has been in business now for decades. Many of us that went to that meeting in August spoke up in defense of Tony's, saying, hey, you know, if you do this, you're going to, potentially, you're going to run him out of business. And we've seen it happen in other shopping centers. A big organization comes in and a small business goes out. There's no need for them to have a hard liquor license. They say, well, it's only 5%. Well, 5% for a large corporation is nothing. They don't, it's not going to help their profits, they need to make that 5%, but 5% for a small business like Tony's could make the difference between being able to go on, being able to hire a couple of people, making employment for people in the community, and providing a decent service, or going out of business and being another vacant lot. So I think the thing you need to look at here as representatives of this community is that there are people in this community who are going to be very adversely affected by this, most prominently the people who run Tony's Liquor, who are people in this community. They're local businesses. They're our people, and these people, by doing what they want to do, are going to be contributing possibly to their demise as a business. And also, there's no necessity for these people to be here, and convenience? It's as convenient for me, I live in this neighborhood, it's as convenient for me to walk out of Food Max, go down to Tony's and get a beer, or whatever else I want to get, as it would be to buy it in the store. And by going down to Tony's, I'm going down to a place where I have friends, people I can talk to. I don't just walk in there, grab something, and leave, and most of us don't. You know, we see Tony's as an institution in our neighborhood, and we don't want to see it threatened by a big conglomerate coming in and on the, under the guise of providing a service that's necessary, running them out. So I ask you to oppose this. It's not for the good of the community. It's not for the good of the people that work at Tony's, and I don't think it's good for Citrus Heights at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Davinder Minhas, followed by Nancy, pardon me, Abram?
Graham.
Graham, sorry.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk. We're the owners of Tony's Liquor. I'm sorry.
Deep breaths.
My husband has been running the business for the last 10 years, put all our money hard into it. We have nothing personal against them.
Food Max.
Food Max. They've been great neighbors. We watch out each other's back. They help us out, we help them out. The problem is that with, their selling point is that it's going to be 5% of their sales. This is a huge corporation. What is 5%? That's a lot of money. So when you look at the percentage, it's nothing, but it's a lot of money. And one-stop shopping, what does that do to Tony's Liquor? When we bought the business, had we had known that there's going to be a liquor license issued, we probably would not have bought it, not have invested all our money into it. But what's going to happen? People go there, majority of the customers that we get, they're local customers. They're local residents, live in the neighborhood. They go get their groceries from Food Max, come over to our store, buy the liquor. What's going to happen? One-stop shopping, they're going to go and just buy everything, and then we lose a huge chunk of our business and our clients. So I strongly urge the city council to consider that you guys might, your decision could potentially put our small business out of business, so.
And also, I'm going to add that, because I can't even competition with them, because they're a big corporation. The, like example, let's say I buy the one Smirnoff bottle for $9 and selling for $12, they are selling for $8.99. So I cannot even compete with them.
We cannot compete with them.
I love Food Max. I mean, we always go shopping there, and we really help each other, but.
We just cannot compete with a big corporation like that, just with prices, because we're having to pay more upfront. So a customer who's going to get something $3 cheaper for a bottle, why would they come to us?
So, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Nancy Graham, followed by Bill Van Duker. Maybe I, maybe it isn't Nancy. Is there Nancy who filled out a speaker sheet? Oh, there you are. Sorry, I didn't see you over there. I apologize. I was looking here.
Well, a lot of my speech has been addressed already.
Nancy, will you pull the mic down, please?
Perfect.
My name is Nancy Graham. I'm president of Area 9, and Area 9 encompasses the entire ABC tract, 8120. I'm going to skip over this because it's longer than three minutes. At an Area 9 meeting, the store manager at that time, Rich Miller, and district manager, Bob Hess, came to present their side basically about that all their stores had a full liquor license as part of doing business. They defended their plan to keep distilled spirits under lock and key and have a customer ring a bell, and he's already described the whole process, where the employee takes it to the cashier, and they pay for it, and that's when they get it. There were comments from the audience as this would make the store look like it was in Oakland. In my estimation, this would be a crippling business model. I did hear him say that they had done this in other stores, but to me, this would possibly require one employee to work in close proximity to that area so that anytime the bell rang, they could get to the customer. I wonder how long this model would be maintained? Would they eventually have to make it accessible to the customer without benefit of an employee intermediary? Surprisingly, at this meeting, they were talking about, everyone in the audience wanted the same thing. They wanted a shopping center to be family-friendly. Keep in mind that this shopping center is surrounded by residential on three sides. There wasn't discussion ahead of time, but one person after another spoke up, and they all agreed, they wanted this to be family-friendly. Let's see, there was, this has to do with the protests. ABC refers to 29 letters received in protest of the Food Max proposal to upgrade their license. There were actually over 80, as Brett mentioned, but ABC has very strict rules about the wording and the proper forms being filled out. So only 29 were actually accepted, but there were 80. And ABC said that their average response for a neighborhood opposed to something is between 15 and 20 total. To put things in perspective, consider the following. At the present time, Copperwood Shopping Center has two of three approved for the entire 8120 tract of off-sale licenses, plus one, which is just across the street, the 7-Eleven. So this means three of three authorized off-sale licenses concentrated within feet of one another in a residential area. There are three more in commercial areas up toward Greenback Lane, so that's a total of six. So this equals, the six together is 200% of those approved for all of 8120. The following are liquor licenses in Copperwood Shopping Center. Type 20 license, which Food Max has.
If you could go ahead and wrap up, that would be great.
Okay. Anyway, what it amounts to is there, the, let's see. They have, of five licenses for on-sale, we have, there are four of them are in Copperwood Shopping Center, and in, when Food Max submitted their letter of public convenience and necessity to the city, they state, and I quote, "Their goal is to benefit the neighborhood and its residents." And in my personal opinion, the only beneficiary from this transfer would be Save Mart Food Max. As you can see, no one, with no one paying attention, licenses have incrementally moved up over time, leaving Copperwood Shopping Center and also.
If you could begin to wrap up, please.
8120 with an oversaturation of liquor licenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Van Duker, followed by Margaret Kleek.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey, and members of the council. My business was located in that shopping center for 15 years, so I'm quite familiar with this shopping center. My home is less than a half a mile away, and I lived there for over 35 years, so I'm familiar with the neighborhood. And we shop at Food Max as one of two of our major food suppliers. I want to say that it pains me to go against the recommendation of the planning department, which I have the very highest respect for. We don't need another liquor license. I want to address the 5% issue. 5% for Food Max may mean 50% for Tony's, but 5% in itself has been portrayed as a small figure. What happens if we have to reduce our police department budget by 5%? I can assure you that 5% is a pretty big figure. The issue of the small business versus the large business has already been addressed quite, quite forcefully, and one of the previous neighborhood folks said that we can't talk about the AMPM, but reality is, we may be facing with the application for an eighth license there sometime within the next 12 months, so that is certainly an issue. It might be for the public convenience, but it's certainly not for the public's necessity. I urge you, a no vote on this issue.
Thank you, Bill. And our last speaker is Margaret Kleek. And for clarification, Bill, you are absolutely correct. There is no pending application here on ARCO AMPM, so that's not even a consideration in this request.
Hello. The points have mostly been covered. I did note that one of the reasons that this was suggested as something that you should approve was that it's only 5% of Food Max's budget, but when you consider that that 5% will wipe out a family's small business, I think that that has to be taken into consideration. The other thing I'd like to note is that I have lived places where liquor was very tightly controlled. In fact, I was interviewing for a job in a dry county, and they told me it was a dry county, and I was so clueless, I said, well, it's in the Mississippi Delta. You'd think you'd get a lot of rain. I was just totally clueless as to what that meant. But what I learned from that is that it can be a very sobering experience, if you will, to not co-mingle your liquor and cigarette budget with your shopping budget. Food Max positions itself as a grocery store for the budget-conscious, those people that really need to have value, and I don't think you're doing people a favor when you sell liquor, because people will, in fact, co-mingle that with their grocery budget, and it will have a, a, an impact on the family that's not positive. The other thing is, I would ask you to listen to the NAs. Nancy does a wonderful job as president of Area 9. She's done a lot of work. She's done a lot of research. She's worked with her people, and I would hope that an area association's wishes are listened to with regard to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So those are all the speaker sheets I have. Did anybody who wants to speak not have an opportunity to fill one out? All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Comments from council members, starting with Mr. Fox.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Years ago, when ABC was, in fact, a real enforcement agency and actually did the job that they were designed to do, this issue would have never come before us. The fact that it, the convenience and necessity was on the books, they would have never kicked this can down the road to the local jurisdiction. It would simply say, no, not acceptable. And I'm going back to the '60s and '70s when I first became aware of what the ABC regulations were and how they handled these types of issues. I have to agree with the residents of the area. I think there's the potential of a disservice here to the community and to Tony's Liquor. I think this could be a disservice to the economic stability of those folks. It's definitely a non-stabilizing issue for the community itself. I am having a difficult time justifying for myself to support this particular application only because of those factors. We have a significant number of our community not in favor of it, and some of you folks I do not know, some of you I do, but I understand where you're concerned and you're coming from. The convenience and the necessity part of what the law says are where I have my problem. And that problem is, I don't see the necessity at this time for an additional liquor license on top of the beer and wine for that area. I think it's, I won't say it's oversaturated, but I think probably some of you will say that. And from that standpoint, I'm still not certain how I should vote on this issue, but I definitely have my reservations about the viability of this particular application.
Thank you, Al. Jeanne?
Thank you. This, this request for liquor license has been one of the more difficult ones for me to consider. In my mind, I've gone back and forth on it as recently as today even. And so, on the, on the one hand, I'm going to make statements on both sides of the issue, actually. On the one hand, I believe that a business, as long as they're operating legally, should be able to operate legally within the confines of the law. And, and on the other hand, also, in, over the years, as we've considered these licenses, if they're in close proximity to a small business, we always get the argument it's going to put that business out of business. And to my knowledge, that has never happened. The small liquor, liquor store operators that have existed have, are still here, all, every one of them, as far as I know. You know, in the process of doing my own due diligence on this, I went to the store, and I briefly met with the store manager. He's brand-new to the store, so he referred me to their corporate office, and I had two conversations with them in the last two days. One of my questions was the fact that this store was originally opened by, when it was opened as Food for Less, was opened as a 24-hour operation. In fact, the woman that I spoke to in the corporate headquarters was unaware that this location had cut their hours back to close at by midnight, which I, I don't shop there a lot, but when I do, I usually go later at night because it's open, and was surprised to learn that they're closing at midnight and have been closing at midnight for a couple of years, I believe. So one of my questions was, what is your future intention for this store? Do you intend to continue limiting those hours, or do you intend to put it back into a 24-hour store, as most of their stores are? And I also asked the question, why are you taking this step? Why now, after all these years, are you applying for a type 21 license? And I was told that that is the model for, for the vast majority of their stores. There are a few, I think she said five, ours being one of them, that just never, that apply, they inherited, I guess, with a type 20 license, and they never upgraded it to a 21, and they're kind of doing this across, across the board. I asked the question of staff if we could do this conditionally, and we cannot, which I kind of knew from past experience. My concern is that it, the model of shopping in the store, behind, by having the liquor behind a lock cabinet in the front of the store, away from a cash register, unlike how Walmart does it, they have theirs locked up too, but it's behind a cash register where the cashier is right there, can turn around, open the cabinet, get the bottle out, close it, and continue servicing the client. This is awkward to me because it's going to require a separate person to come forward to make that, get that bottle of spirits and help the client make, or the customer make up an acquisition. Also, the question of convenience and necessity, you know, we kind of brush over that, but is it convenient? I just don't see this as a convenient shopping model, but is it necessary? This comes to us, you know, paradoxically, in an area where there's always an oversaturation. So the, the argument that it's necessary is very unclear to me as being a benefit to the community. So those are the things that I'm considering as I've. So those are the things that I'm considering as I've weighed this back and forth. On the one hand, I think the store is being as diligent as it can be. I know that crime is way down. They have cleaned it up. They have new signage. It's a much more pleasant store to shop in than it was at one time. But as I went in the store and I saw their very first aisle was just all wine, my first thought was, number one, I know that they do that to keep it inside of the store staff, but number two, it's also, would be so easy for someone to come in and grab and run and just go through a vacant, what do you call it?
Checkout line.
Checkout line, thank you. That's not being manned and be out the door. So I, I think that in this situation, that this is, this is a liquor license that I'm not going to be able to support. And one last reason being the fact that they will continue to have a type twenty, which they can sell at any other location in our city. So in essence, we are, by default, you know, providing more alcohol at yet another location. And we have plenty. So that's, and as early as, as recently as earlier today, I really felt I could support this, but I just can't see the reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Brett?
Thank you. I think a lot of good things have been said. For me, I'm a strong supporter of competition, but for me, competition isn't two businesses, you know, next, right, literally within feet of each other trying to survive. I don't think giving this license would contribute to any increase in homelessness or cleanliness or anything like that. I think those are arguments that we just don't need to have. For me, it's all about, again, there's a guideline. The guideline is a certain number. It's not necessarily a line in the sand and we have before gone over the line and I'm okay with that. But I don't understand going over the line and double, you know, and two-hundred percent and then looking to add even another one. What's the point of the guideline? After a while, there's just no point. So would it make it convenient for some? Yeah, probably. I live here. I live across the street. This is my grocery store. Would I like that convenience sometimes of, when I buy beer and wine, I buy it from Food For Less? Would I like the convenience of a bottle of liquor if I wanted to? Sure. But if I want a bottle of liquor, I go down to Tony's. And, you know, I have to spend a whole twenty seconds getting there. And so, the necessity side is what it's boiling down for me, is that there is no necessity for this. We don't need it. The community doesn't need it. The community has spoken. They don't want it. And so I'm going to listen to the community and I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Brett. Steve?
No long speeches. I don't have anything to really add. I just do not find it necessary for the neighborhood. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. So a couple of things. You know, I heard many of you out there. First of all, you know, I appreciate everybody who comes here to talk to us about it. We're all entitled to our opinions and I think it's great. The only thing I didn't like was I heard a lot of those people, they, you know, we're all citizens here, right? Whether it's of Citrus Heights, whether it's Sacramento County, whatever. Folks at Food Max go to work just like you and me and try to make a living. So, you know, in the future, I hope we can just kind of, you know, all of us together, not them, those people. Heard a lot of comments here and I could probably refute seventy percent of them. I mean, I went over to Food Max. I don't personally shop there, but I went over there and sat in the parking lot for an hour and a half, very bored, I have to tell you. And what I was specifically looking for was people walking out of Food Max going to Tony's Liquors. Because like Brett said, it's probably a twenty, thirty-second walk down the way. In an hour and a half, I did see one who came out, went, put their groceries away, went down there, did come out with the bag, so, you know, good, good for them. I'm also going to say, from what I heard from everybody here, that, you know, Tony's is a local place, they support them. I sure hope you're all going to Tony's and regardless, although I can do the math here, it doesn't look like this is going to pass, you know, I would sure hope, even if it did, that if you talk about a local business and you support them, that you would continue whether you could save a buck at Food Max or not. So I'm going to take a slightly different approach. You know, I look at Sunrise Boulevard, we get on average forty-five thousand cars that go up and down that street a day. I get the numbers from the ABC, don't necessarily agree with them because, quite frankly, I don't think the people that go into Food Max go into Seven-Eleven and buy, or, you know, some may go over to Bevmo. I buy ninety percent of my liquor when I go to the grocery store. I think that's just the way people do it. Okay? And, you know, again, an hour and a half, only one person went over there. Good for them. I look at what we've done across the city for, you know, we support businesses, big and small. And there's not, I don't believe there's any other grocery store in town that doesn't have both. I could be wrong. But when I saw the proposal, saw the locked cage, to me, that's doing their due diligence. You know, I heard Jeannie say that, oh, you know, it's not a good business model, they'll have to change it. That's not my problem. That's how it's approved. If they change it, then, you know, we have a say. I personally believe it is a convenience for the shoppers. Necessity, we could probably have that argument back and forth. I am probably going to be one of, one who does support this, but I would say this, the, for me to support it, I would ask Food Max to give up the twenty license. If they were not to do that, then I probably wouldn't support it. Doesn't matter because we can't seem to add any conditions, but if I count, I've heard definitely three, one yes and no. So at this point, I would say, you know, I would open it up to a motion to either approve or deny the staff recommendation.
I'll move to deny the letter of public convenience and necessity.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Daniels. We have a second by Ms. Bruins. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Fox?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Sowey?
No. So we have four to one against denying the motion. The motion does not, the motion passes to deny the license, so Food Max will continue with a twenty and not get a twenty-one. Is that correct? Thank you. And thank you all for coming out. All right. So we do have additional business, so you're more than welcome to stay, although I imagine most of you probably don't want to. So thank you again for coming, but if you could keep it down as you leave, I would appreciate it. All right. Next item, Amy, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number thirteen. The subject is draft allocation of federal 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funds. The recommendation is to hear public testimony on the fund allocation and draft action plan and then continue final action until the November ninth city council meeting.
Welcome, Nicole. Sorry you had to wait all night.
It's okay. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Nicole Piva, Housing and Grants Program Technician. So I'm here tonight to present to you the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funding. Specifically is our action plan. So our action plan outlines to HUD how we spend our CBG money. And two components in that action plan is our capital money and our public service money. So those are two items we'll be talking about tonight. Overall, we expect to receive about $589,000. We estimate this amount on prior year's funding and also depending on when the federal budget is adopted, this number could fluctuate a little bit. So the grant is made up of three different components. We have public service money, which is fifteen percent. We have administration money, which is twenty percent, and then the remaining goes to capital We have a citizen participation plan. Because we do receive federal funds, we do have to allow the community to comment on how we use federal dollars. So we start, we start this process in July. We release an application for public services to apply for funding. And we host an application workshop. We invite those nonprofits who would like to apply for funding or those that are just generally interested in how CBG works. So we host that workshop and questions and answers are answered then. Applications are due in August and then staff meets with Quality of Life in September. At that time, we review those applications and the committee makes the recommendations, which public services they would like to fund and their rewards. So staff puts together a draft action plan. That's where we're here tonight to hear public comment. And then we'll continue to the November ninth meeting where council will approve this action plan. The first recommendation by the committee is to fund a citywide accessibility project. Is that capital improvement pot of money for $383,000. Moving into public services, this year, we received eight applications. This chart shows of the first six, we currently fund these nonprofits. We received two new applications, one from Community for Peace and the others from Crossroads Diversified. The column on the right, the CBG request, these are the dollar amounts that each of these organizations requested. And adding up this total amount, it's over $130,000. Going back to that public service pot of money, we only have $88,000 to allocate. So unfortunately, we can't fund all of these organizations. The Quality of Life Committee did want to fund them all, but we partially fund them. So this chart shows the public services at the Quality of Life is recommending funding and their 2018 CBG amount. This is the amount that they're recommending funding each public service. In addition, some of these public services receive community support funds. So the public services applied for these community support funds and they were awarded funding. This is a fiscal year funding amount through our general fund. So with that, I'd like to open up to a public comment and I'm available for any questions. And then we'd like to continue this item to November ninth.
Great. Thank you, Nicole. Any questions of Nicole from council? Yes.
Oh, good, you went back. I'm sorry. Is the column on the left with the numbers, the amount that we're looking to provide? Or is the column on the right what we're looking to provide?
The 2018 CBG column, the one in the middle, that's the column that the Quality of Life has recommended.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any additional questions? All right, so this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it. I have four, yep, four speaker sheets. So I'll call you up in that order and you'll have three minutes. Campus Life is first, Dan Palmer and Julie Habib, followed by Jim Estep from Crossroads. Estep, sorry. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for your time. I'm really excited to be here today and speak with you. I want to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Dan Palmer. I'm the new executive director of Campus Life Connections. Campus Life Connections has had a strong partnership with the City of Citrus Heights in the past and as executive director, I hope to continue that into the future. And I want to introduce my colleague, Julie, who works at the Sayonara Center.
Welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Julie Habib and I've had the privilege of serving with Campus Life Connection at the Sayonara Center for five years. The Sayonara Center offers an after-school program in Citrus Heights for underserved children in youth in first through twelfth grade. We provide a healthy snack, homework help, tutoring, mentoring, and athletic and enrichment opportunities. The Sayonara Center serves an average of sixty children daily after school. In June of this year, we ended the school year with ninety-five students enrolled. Our mission is to strengthen and support the community by equipping children and their families with positive resources. We do this by building character, confidence, and responsibility in our students and the surrounding community. As the majority of the children who attend do not receive dinner upon returning home, we provide them with a large nutritious snack as soon as they arrive. At the Sayonara Center, we focus on the students' academics through tutoring and mentoring and we provide them with athletic and enrichment opportunities they would not receive without the center providing them. Every year, we challenge ourselves to grow the program, to reach additional students, and to provide them with even more opportunities. So far this school year, we have six boys participating in flag football through Sunrise Park and Recreation, thirty students enrolled in upward basketball that will begin in December, and tomorrow night, we're taking fifteen students to martial arts for a twelve-week workshop. This year, our goal is to expand the building's use and establish a weekly ESL class and an AA group for the students' parents and the Sayonara community in hopes to increase the parents' involvement in their children's academics and lower the substance abuse rate in Citrus Heights. We are grateful for the City of Citrus Heights' continued support of the Sayonara Center and our efforts to benefit the underserved children and their families in the community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. You're almost right on the dot on three minutes. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Estep, followed by David Morikawa. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sowey and the rest of the councilmembers. My name is Jim Estep and I'm the president and CEO of Crossroads Diversified Services. And since this will be the first year that we would actually receive funding from CBG, I wanted to tell you a little bit about our organization and I want to do that very quickly for you. First of all, we've been in the Sacramento area as a service provider for adults with psychiatric disabilities for nearly forty years. We've also worked with youth with psychiatric and other disabilities for over sixteen years. Our mission, really, our core mission is to provide youth and adults with disabilities resources and support to be successful in not only preparing for, but maintaining employment. And we also work with their educational and training goals. Most importantly, our staff provide the youth and adults we serve with vision so they understand there are multiple pathways to success. We've had an ongoing relationship with the community of Citrus Heights. We've provided employment services to youth since 2001 and we have been the operator of the Citrus Heights Job Center on Sylvan Road since 2008. Our project that we're bringing forward is called the Youth Employment Readiness Program that we refer to as YARP. And this is actually a program that would restore funding that was lost, was federal-funded before and we lost that funding and had to give up the program. And this program would be onsite at Mesa Verde and San Juan High Schools. The program would be comprehensive in-class instruction for high school students aged fourteen to eighteen. Employment readiness, which includes resume building, interview skills, career exploration, soft skill development, which would be communication, critical thinking, teamwork, collaboration, and financial theory, and literacy. Finally, I would like to thank the staff and the committee for recommending us for this funding and thank you for listening and considering us for funding requests.
Thank you for being here and giving us an update of what you're doing.
Any questions?
Sure.
Yeah, so knowing that the Mesa Verde High School has a three-year business academy that teaches many of the same things that you are offering and has a practical application through their campus mall and their Safe Credit Union branch that's on campus, how are, are you interacting with them at all or how are you working in relationship to what they already have to offer?
Well, we've actually had an ongoing relationship with both of the high schools and have worked with both the counselors and the teachers there. And when we had to give up the program, which I believe is in 2015, they were very upset about that.
So you actually...
So they're very anxious to get us back.
Do you compliment their program and work with them? Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Morikawa, followed by John Foley from Sacramento Self-Help. Welcome back.
Hi.
Mayor, city council, city staff, thank you very much for letting me be here. I'm David Morikawa with Meals on Wheels by ACC. We just want to be here today to support the recommendation for the funding for our program here in Citrus Heights. We also want to thank you for your ongoing support to our seniors in your community. Your support helps us make sure that the help in feeding and caring for the seniors in your, in this area that are in need of nutrition, safety checks, and just really personal visits to keep them safe at home is being able to continue because of your support. We invite you to visit our program, to do a ride-along and see some of the seniors that we are helping stay at home rather than going to a nursing care facility or assist a living facility and see for yourself what our volunteers are able to do to provide a little bit of sunshine in their lives each and every day. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And John Foley. And guest. Well. I know.
Hi, John Foley, executive director, Sacramento Self-Help Housing and Vitima, who actually knows what's going on. knows what's going on here, but I thought I should come too. We've had a very long relationship with you here in town, and have really appreciated the kind of support that you've been able to give us. As you know, most of the folks that are out on the street are actually long-term Citrus Heights residents, and it's just painful to have the challenges that exist to, for them to get back into housing, and to get services. You know, it's difficult to connect people up with, with mental health services, it's hard to get people drug and alcohol services. We're obviously failing, we've heard stories tonight about, you know, people that are attacking people at their front door and all that. We have not been successful in getting all your people housed. It's, you know, an ongoing issue. The police have been remarkable as partners in, in the work that we're doing in the navigation program, and I think probably better than any other community we work in, we just really have appreciated the, the kind of attitude and approach that, that your police department has. For housing counseling, you know, which we've done for a long time, a lot of the folks actually are housed, and we're just trying to help them find a cheaper place or a better place, but for folks that are on the street, it's, you know, just really a lot of work. The other program we do is this Renters Helpline piece, and you're probably familiar with that. That's one where when one of your constituents calls you and are having problems in, with their housing, hopefully refer them to us, and we help them understand landlord-tenant law, help them understand their responsibilities as tenants, and maybe sometimes help them find a way to break it to their landlord that they don't have the full rent this month, and kind of how to deal with that. It is so important to us that people who are housed don't fall out of housing, and so we try to either help them find a way to make it work, maybe arbitrate, or mediate, or just find a way to have a conversation with the landlord as well as the tenant. And sometimes we can't make it work, and then we try and help them find other housing so that we don't end up having to work with them when they're out on the street. We've had a couple of different people act as our navigators here in town, and that could be a problem, but with Fatima here the whole time, it is not. It's just been a great experience for us. I don't know if you want to say anything particular to Fatima, but, you know, these folks are great.
We really appreciate the work from the city staff, city council members, the homeless assistance resource team, community members, community members that helping us identify unsheltered Citrus Heights community members, and just look forward to continuing to work with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. I think you made an important point about people, you don't want them to become homeless by losing what they have, so appreciate that, what you do on the Renters Helpline. All right, so that is it for public comment. I'm going to close the public comment. I think the recommendation is to continue final action to November 9th. Do we need a motion for that, or we just, I can just say that and be done? Yeah, okay. Somebody want to make that motion?
So I move that we continue this item to the next council meeting for action.
Second. On the advice of our attorney, we'll move that forward with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stay in motion carries five zero. Next item.
Next item, number 14. The subject is debt issuance and management policy. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the debt issuance and management policy and taking related actions.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Rhonda Rivera, city staff. Actually, I'm going to talk on items 14 and 15. Both of these items deal with financial policies, and so, as I said, I'll bring them together. Staff periodically review city policy for accuracy, relevance, and compliance with local, state, and federal law, as well as with recommended best practices. The two policies being brought forward tonight address recent law and best practices. The first policy is the debt issuance and management policy. The policy addresses the purpose for which debt proceeds may be used, the type of debt that may be issued, the relationship of the debt to the capital improvement program or budget, policy goals, and internal control procedures to ensure that proceeds from any debt issuance will be directed to the intended use. The second policy is the post-issuance and continuing disclosure compliance policy. The policy addresses compliance and reporting requirements should debt be issued. Now, the reason why we're bringing this forward is that SB 1029, the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission Accountability Reports, became effective on January 1st, 2017. The law requires public entities that issue debt to have comprehensive debt management policies adopted by the governing body. Although the City of Citrus Heights does not have existing debt, comprehensive debt management policies that establish guidelines, identify goals, and detail objectives provide guidance for future decision makers. In order to be compliant with SB 1029, and to establish clear policy regarding reporting requirements should the city ever decide to issue debt, staff recommends the city council adopt two separate resolutions. One is adopting the debt issuance and management policy, and the other is adopting the post-issuance and continuing disclosure compliance policy. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff?
No.
All right, so there's two, two here, and I appreciate you speaking on both of them simultaneously. However, we do have separate resolutions, so let's tackle item 14. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move staff's approval.
Second?
I mean, staff's recommendations.
Yeah, okay.
That approval.
They would appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second for the resolution on item 14. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero. What's the pleasure on item 15?
Move adaptation.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
So the next item is department report number 16. The subject is update on award of active transportation program grant.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Casey Kemp and I are in Planning Division with Leslie Blumquist in the General Services Division. We're happy to be here tonight to tell you about a couple of grants that we've been selected to receive. A little bit of background about these grants, they're through the Active Transportation Program, which is managed by Caltrans. The intent of this grant program is to increase walking and biking and alternative transportation. The program is very competitive. They had over 450 applications across the state requesting over a billion dollars' worth of, of funds. They actually only funded about 350 million, which we were able to get two applications approved for that. The first project Leslie will tell you a little bit about is the Mariposa Safe Routes to School Project, Phase Four. It's about $2.1 million. It's a complete streets project. It's Madison Avenue to Northeast Circle on Mariposa. The second project, I'll talk a little bit later, is the Electric Greenway. It's about $6.2 million. It's a multi-use trail that stretches from Sunrise Boulevard to Wachtel. So I'll turn it over to Leslie, and she'll tell you a little bit about Mariposa.
Good evening, council members. Mariposa Safe Routes to School, Phase Four, project will construct the final .3 miles of a total 1.2 mile Safe Routes to School project along Mariposa between Greenback and Madison. This project, this final phase, includes improvements between Northeast and Madison, and includes all the missing sidewalk, curb ramps, streetlights, bike lanes, and some upgrades to the traffic signal at Madison and Mariposa. Here's some existing conditions, photos, and a map of the approximate limits of this final phase, Phase Four. Once this phase is complete, Mariposa Avenue will have complete and continuous sidewalks and bicycle facilities along both sides of Mariposa, all the way between Greenback and Madison, finalizing an effort which was started over 12 years ago.
And then, as most of you are aware, the Electric Greenway was a project we talked about for a number of years. It's a 2.9-mile Class 1, which is a 10-foot-wide paved trail similar to what you see at Old Auburn or the Arcade Creek Park Preserve. The project actually connects seven different parks, connects Sunrise Marketplace and Woodside Elementary to several neighborhoods that are surrounding this, this area. It's a partnership, it's, we've got a lot of partners, it's got the San Juan Unified School District, Sunrise Parks and Rec, Orangevale Parks and Rec, Sacramento County, and SMUD. This is a map that shows the project location. On the bottom of the screen here is the Arcade Creek Park Preserve. The project will have some public improvements along Sunrise to connect to the signal at Sayonara, to have a safe crossing there, come back down, and then it will follow the SMUD access road into Tempo Park. It'll go through Tempo Park, in which we'll, at Fair Oaks Boulevard, there'll be a crossing that'll include a pedestrian-activated signal, and then it'll leave the city for a brief period and be in Sacramento County and Orangevale. It'll go through Sundance Park, and then there's a point where it has to go on-street on a quiet street that has sidewalks, and it'll be a pretty low-volume street. And then again, on Woodmore Oaks, it'll pick, the trail will pick up again, following the SMUD corridor through various parks. At Cbar C Park, it'll again cross at the existing signal at Cbar C. It'll go through Cbar C Park and have a spur to Woodside Elementary, and then it'll also spur off and ultimately follow the SMUD corridor into, to Wachtel, essentially. So it's about three miles long. Both of these projects will have a significant amount of outreach and, and work that, environmental work that has to be done in the near future, and Leslie will go over the schedule.
Well, the schedule for both projects is very similar. Both projects will begin the outreach design and environmental early in 2018, with final design ending in 2019. Construction is anticipated to occur in fiscal year 2021.
With that, we just want to give you an update on where we were at with those, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Quick question. On the Mariposa project, we're not duplicating any work required by the new subdivision at 5555, are we?
No, we'll be tying into the sidewalk that they will be installing, but our project does not include any of it.
Thanks. Any additional questions?
Excited it happened.
On the, the Electric Greenway, whatever, there's no need to, to do any eminent domain or go through anybody's property or anything like that?
The, the majority of the trail, there is easements that are intended for trail purposes. There's a couple of property owners in Orangeville that the Orangeville Parks and Rec is, is working with on an easement from them, so that's going through. There are folks that have built fences in, within easements, so we'll be, we'll be working with them, but we do have publicly owned property and/or easements for the vast majority of the, of the project.
So when you're saying easements, though, do you mean onto their property?
The, the easements are existing pieces of land over their property, correct, that exists currently, that when the map was created to create the subdivision, a portion of that land was reserved for trail purposes.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
So just to clarify on that point, then, there is no need for eminent domain?
Correct. Right. They've essentially built over an easement, knowing it was there to begin with. And when I say built, maybe put a fence.
Fence typically, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you for that update, and again, this was the, the money that SECAG granted out of the Caltrans, so more to come, hopefully, more money to come, hopefully. Great job, folks, thank you. Next item, Amy.
Next item is city manager item.
Yes, council, I have one brief item. I'd like to ask Sergeant Morris to step forward up here in the camera view. Tonight, there's been kind of a changing of the guards for our pop sergeant. Unfortunately, I don't see Sergeant Baldwin in here. The mayor did recognize him at the beginning of the meeting and appreciated his service. You know, the role of the pop sergeant is a very important role. Not only do they run all of our primary policing officers and operation and code enforcement and other things, but they are our officer at our council meetings, interacting with the public, serving the council, providing security, and I wanted everyone to, to see and meet Sergeant Chad Morris. And I do see Sergeant Baldwin, our outgoing pop sergeant, joining us, and again, I wanted to publicly thank you, Jason, for your great service in the role of, of pop sergeant. From time to time, the police chief does transition and transfer our supervisors and managers to different assignments for, for their careers, so that's happening. So we're, we're still going to see Sergeant Baldwin, I know, but I wanted everyone to, to know and to meet Sergeant Morris, he will be our face here for serving all of us in, in this room and all of his other assignments. So congratulations to you, Chad, and Jason, thank you so much for your service, we very much appreciate it.
And Jason, you've done a great job, Chad. I'm sure you'll do just as equally, but we'll let you know.
So where is Sergeant Baldwin being assigned to?
So I go back to patrol for the first month as an acting lieutenant in place of a lieutenant who's not here, and then I will go to day shift, and then I will go to the relief position in January. So where that falls is whoever's on vacation is, I pick them up.
It's rotating.
In the bullpen, huh?
All right. Great, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Next item, Amy.
Items requested by council members, or any future agenda items?
Any items from the council members? Just remember the retreat on the first, all day on Wednesday.
Yes.
All right, with that, we will call it a night.